All right, it's 6:30. Let's call the meeting to order. Let's begin to do our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Who'd like to say the prayer?
I will. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all these people that are giving their time to try to help with this little city that we have, that by the way, you've blessed so much over the last several years. I mean, it's been almost eight years since we suffered through Harvey, and we bounced back and came back with your help and your grace, and we've been protected. I feel like that you've just had your hand on us this whole time, that the storms have just kept away, and we hope for some continued grace on that. We want to pray for everyone that's sick and people that are traveling and on the road, and that they're safe, and that everybody here is safe on their way home. We ask that in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's do roll call.
Bud Marandino, Ward 1.
Ward 3.
Lonny Cleeton, Ward 2.
Jerry Mitchell, Mayor.
Roger Manette, Ward 1.
Jeff Tippett, Ward 3.
Any conflict of interest statements?
Negative.
Any citizens' comments?
Do y'all want to have a citizen's comment? Melissa, you want to speak? You want to bring something in?
Yeah, I know y'all just got here.
If you wanted to say something, you do. Okay.
All right, we're going to move on to our presentation by Charles Reed for our audit.
Would you like a chair, sir?
I'm good, thank you. I want to read to you the second paragraph. It's on page 1 of this financial statement. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above present fairly in all material respects respected financial position of governmental activity, the business-type activities in each major fund of the city of Bevel Oak, Texas, as of September 30, 2024, and respective changes in financial position and where applicable, cash flows thereof for the year then ended, and of course, with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. This is called a clean or unqualified audit opinion. We did receive cooperation from your staff and management and contractor accountants. The next section is called the Management's Discussion and Analysis. I would encourage you to read through that. It compares this year to last year, '24 to '23, talks about assets and liabilities, and revenues and expenditures, and debt and capital assets, and your budget. Pages 10 through 7, 10 through 18 are the various financial statements of the city. I want to look a little bit at page 12. This is the balance sheet of the general fund. And what I like to do is get a copy of the prior year, of the last year's financial, and sort of compare them. On September 30, 2024, total assets, $798,000, and most of that, $668,000, that is cash and cash equipment. A year ago, total assets for your general fund was $1,044,000. The '23 year, you were, you got a big grant, and you spent a lot of money on fixing up through that grant. You didn't get the big grant in 2024. Your liabilities, at the end of September 30, 2024, $45,000, and the year before was $155,000. Your equity or fund balance, $752,000, and the year before was $889,000. Page 14 is the, I call it the income statement, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the general fund. Total revenues, $322,000. Property tax and sales tax revenues are the majority of your revenue. Prior year was $2,489,000 of revenue, and that's $2,200,000 of that was a large grant you received. Expenses, $502,000. You did spend the rest of the grant, or are you finished with the projects? The prior year, you spent $2,900,000, which, $2,500,000 of that was from the grant money. And you had some transfers into the general fund from your enterprise fund, from the Public Works Fund, $43,000. That resulted in net change, a negative net change in the business. It'd be called a loss. It is a loss of $136,000. So your ending fund Page 16 is the similar balance, I call it balance sheet, a statement of net position for the enterprise fund, Public Works Fund. You have total assets, $7,395,000, compared to a year ago, $7,547,000. Liberties, total liabilities, $1,397,000. A year ago, $1,523,000. So your net fund balance, net equity is $5,997,000. A year ago was $6,230,000, about a, close to a break-even year. You had a loss of $25,000. And the next page, page 17.
Was that due to, looking at total assets, if I followed your math kind of quickly, we were, our total assets were $152,000 less than they were a year before.
That's about right, yes, sir. $7,547 to $7,395, that's about.
That was, was that due to, there's not any grants involved in that, right? Is that due to current assets, or is that due to capital asset changes?
A little of both, I believe. If you, the cash, $1,256,000 a year ago, $1,152,000.
So that's a plus $100,000.
That's correct. The accounts receivable is very similar, $53,000 compared to $56,000. Your restricted cash, $179,000 compared to $227,000, so that's down. And the big change is.
Now, that is, not bond, but grant money right there, right?
Grant money, and you hold some customers.
Deposits.
Deposits.
Yeah, but that's not, well, okay. Okay, all right.
Didn't we finish up a grant payment last year? We xed out a grant. Maybe that's where that money's at.
That's when it was all in.
No, not here. That'll show up on that other one. This looks, this looks like that's where the difference is, right there.
I thought you said it showed up in the capital expenses, which would have ended up being right.
Oh, is this that yet? Oh, is this that yet?
Give me the, what was the current, the '04, the '24 non-current asset number again, compared to $179,000?
You had less assets, you had less liabilities also. You owed less homes and bonds and all further notes.
Okay, so that's where some of that comes in. That comes in on the paying off the bond, okay.
Times appreciation.
Yeah, that would make sense. Where do we pay on that bond a year?
$63,000.
How much?
$63,866 is what he has here for bond premium.
We paid it off.
If you look at the whole number, page 26.
Yeah, the breakdown of the bond.
Okay, all right. I don't get too hung up on all that accounting appreciation, my book, I always say, cash in, the expenses going out. That's what I get excited about.
It's an expense one way or another. If you're purchasing an asset, you have to either accumulate some assets to, some money to replace it.
Yeah, I understand, I understand all that, but that's, actually, that depreciation is a positive cash flow.
Yeah, I guess it's a.
Okay, I understand, I understand.
From the, if you, if you pay for it all at once, or if you're paying the note, there is some interest and some note principal, but that doesn't necessarily follow the depreciation.
Well, I mean, I'm understanding that, that difference there, because that $152,000 less gave me a little heartburn, because we're trying to maintain our revenue, which is basically water, sewer. So, and I know that we did, we've done that, so I wanted to make sure I knew where that was coming from, and it wasn't coming from water, sewer. So you've, you've shown me here that we, our cash and cash equivalents increased by below $100,000 off.
Well, let's look at the next page. It is your income statement or statement of revenues and expenses.
Okay.
And your revenues, operating revenues, $654,000. Prior year was $685,000, so it's down a little bit.
Okay.
Your operating expenses, $649,000, compared to prior year, $585,000, so it's up $65,000. And it's, each, each land item's up some. The biggest increase is in repairs and recurring expenses.
Now, what was that in '23?
$214,000.
Yeah, okay.
And I might say, if you turn to the very last page, it's the similar statement except compared to your budget, or the income statement.
The last page?
30.
30. So you busted a million, sort of in the middle of the page, a million dollars of expenses. You actually spent $764,000, so you're within your budget. Your revenues were very close, just a little bit more than anybody. And what you did in budget was some transfers out. And that.
Yeah, okay.
Goes to the other fund.
Yeah, I got you.
I did also want to read to you on page 23, towards the send note number two, the second paragraph. The city's cash deposits of September 30, 2024 were entirely covered by FIC interest or by pledged collateral held by the city's agency. So your money is insured by FIC or you have collateral, your bank holds your collateral for that amount. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions or go through this more, whatever is your
If I go back to the very first page.
Yes, sir.
That, the second paragraph you read, you said, "We're in accord as with accounting principles generally accepted." Well, that's good.
That is the best opinion ever. Called an unqualified, there's no qualified opinion.
Yeah, yeah. Now, compared to previous years, are we about the same? Are we getting better? Are we not as good? You know, is there something, is there any flags that popped up that says, "Hey, you're doing good, but y'all watch this?"
There are a couple of minor things. I think what the council, your own system, whatever inconsistencies there were. So your system is very good. It works well.
Okay, so that's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
What it caught was, what do we need to do about preventing, I don't know what you're talking about, but what do we need to do? Do we need to do something to prevent it from testing the system?
No, I think that there were some bills the council approved, where your policy might say you get them approved before they're expended, but that happened.
It's kind of like my kids, they did something, I whip them, and I don't want them doing that again. Somebody need to whip me?
I don't think so.
Okay, good.
Yeah, according to what you spent.
I'll spend more this year.
All right. Thank you. All right. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, next item up on the agenda is review approved consent items. Kind of a motion?
Yes.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm not opposing, I'm ayeing, but I had one, I wanted to ask Sabrina a question. How much did we approve for the roads when we all voted in here to get the roads redone, which has been months and months and months ago?
30.
I mean, I think it was last year. I don't want to kill too much time. I'm just, okay, I'll wait. We'll talk about that at the end of the meeting.
Let's move on to number eight, review approved action item, canvassing the election in November. Kind of a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to move on to our pre-oth office, starting with Ward 1, Bud Sabrina, are you going to be issuing the oath?
Yes, I am. I was asking a question.
He shouldn't have been late.
Well, I was asking a question about the oath. Lonny is going to follow me.
Yeah, exactly. Bud, you get to go first.
Where?
At the same time.
Okay, we're going to do them all at the same time? Okay. Ward 1, we're going to do them all. All right.
We did it last year.
I thought you were going to do it.
No, because.
No, we did them all together last year.
I state your name.
I.
Raise your right hand directly.
I.
I, Bud Marandino.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I have not directly?
That I have not directly.
Or indirectly paid?
Or indirectly paid.
Offered?
Offered.
Promised to pay?
Promised to pay.
Contributed?
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute?
Or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value?
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public office?
Or promised any public office.
Or employment for the giving?
Or employment for the giving.
Or withholding?
Or withholding.
Of a vote?
Of a vote.
At the election?
At the election.
At which I was elected?
At which I was elected.
Or as a reward?
Or as a reward.
To secure my appointment?
To secure my appointment.
Or confirmation?
Or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, we're going to move on to the oath of office.
Okay. Do they have to say in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas? Repeat after me. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute?
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of, and then?
The duties of the office of Ward 3, City Council.
Of the state of Texas?
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability preserve?
And will to the best of my ability preserve?
Protect?
Protect.
And defend?
And defend.
The Constitution and laws?
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States?
Of the United States.
And of this state?
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, we're going to convene and go into an executive session.
Welcome back, your counsel.
Thank you.
Make sure you sign it freely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, everybody put their phones.
I'll make a motion if we go to executive on Christmas.
Mics are on.
I'm on the clock.
Mics are on.
Man, what time is it?
We're waiting on chat.
8:05.
An hour and a half, we won't get back, I don't know why. I got deer chili waiting on me. We ain't even stole leftover deer chili.
It'll be nap time by the time you get to.
My wife.
I made it Sunday.
She's home, yeah. Yeah, she got to be home.
Charlie, you share your location on your phone with Stephanie?
I hope not, because he's coming to my house. All right, let's call the meeting back to order. It is, you know, 6:00.
I'm listening.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All righty. Up for, the next item up on the agenda is to review and approve action items. First one is to approve the audit. Kind of a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next one is consideration discussion and approval whether to adjust the wages and salary compensation for the city employees.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
All right, we've decided on Leila, 15, Charlie, 17, Heather, 1950, and Sabrina, 2950. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose one of them.
Mr. Stute, you said that?
No, I didn't say, I didn't say anything.
Didn't you say anything? All right, Lonny's opposed. Which one?
Opposed to what? Sabrina's inquiry.
All right. Next item on the agenda is C, consideration discussion approval of clearing homes that are in violation of various ordinances. Kind of a motion?
I motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
What is this?
We're clearing the houses.
We're clearing the houses.
You said first one and then two.
Roger.
We don't see, we don't see.
First property to be cleared, everything is actually in your folders?
Okay, this, this motion is to clear all four of them.
Yes, all four of them.
Okay, I have a problem with clearing all four of them.
Me too.
I can clear three of them. One of them, it looks to me like there's been nothing done.
Okay, so I guess the motion can be we clear three, but not one? Is that what I'm understanding?
I'll second that.
So I have a, I have a question about why all the redaction?
That way it's, we're not knowing exactly the person's name and address. That's the only reason she redacted it.
I'm wondering, what are we, I mean, we're trying to clear something here, but yet we've got just a duplicate photograph, and we've not seen the properties, and?
One picture is, the clearance in the one is the four.
We saw it, we seen it.
Heather, did you bring the folders by any chance? Okay.
We'll have to strike that from the record, or what?
Y'all can talk about the address.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, yeah, she redacted it.
This looks to me, this is just ridiculous.
Do we want to not clear them until we have clarification? I mean, we can table it.
I know that there was one that I think Jim was referring to. I don't know if it's the same one, but I'm still looking for the photo. Here's the photograph.
It's the last one.
Yeah, the last one.
Very last one.
What is it that has been improved on that?
Nothing.
And so why are we trying to clear it?
Well, I don't know. Why are we trying to clear it? Why are we trying to clear it?
No, I think, no, I think he said, he said he wasn't getting, he wasn't clearing one of them.
Which is?
The fourth one.
The last one, which is the last one.
But why is it in the packet to clear if, if it hasn't been? That's, that's my question.
Well, according to the notes that I'm looking at, junk vehicles were cleared because you brought in the registration and the tags. The unsafe building needs further review, violation issued on 8/22. And, no, that's, sorry, that's Sweetum.
There's nothing on here. There's only, the only one on this one is junk vehicle ordinance 199.
That's it.
Although I question is that, should it have been cited for something else too, but?
How about if we tabled this and when Stephanie's back?
I think the other three need to be cleared, because I drove down there and they did their job. They moved a trailer, they moved cars, they mowed, they got junk cars out of the yard. I mean, why are we, why are we not clearing them? There's three of them there that need to be cleared.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And one of them was on Sweetum that was a pickup in water, he took care of that.
Took care of that?
Yeah.
That needs to be cleared. He cleared it up. I mean, he's cleared.
All right.
So there's only one in question, and there's auto parts that are visible from the road, fenders, hood.
So can we, so can we agree to clear up the three and bring back? And how are we going to identify the redacted three?
Because we have the file.
We do have the.
Are we going to say number one, number two, number three, first page, second page?
We can do that.
Yes, 1, 2, 3. Because the one that we're not actually clearing is the fourth one.
I don't ever want to see this like this again. This doesn't make any sense.
You said they don't have to be redacted. One of them I figured out from the vehicles.
I'll say wheat.
And if, in all honesty?
If you're involved in red, you got to know the traffic. You got to take it.
Correct. In, in all honesty, if we're going to be the ones to have the final say to clear, we should have some of the kind of foreknowledge of, at least given the opportunity, go see.
You did. You got a packet.
I got a packet that's been redacted.
Oh, you don't know where they are?
Yeah.
Well, I'm also looking at a possible.
You didn't know where Morpheus Land was yet?
They'll do all of this online. I can add to the website. We don't have to do this every again.
So can we, can we go ahead?
I know.
All except for the one?
Yeah, all except for the one.
Well, you don't have to dig through this one, you just have to practice it, but it is easier to add.
I don't know where this is. Next time we'll have addresses, or we'll call the city and we'll ask them what the addresses are of these properties. That's a phone call.
I think it's just the methodology, yeah, we're fine with this, it's just the, the methodology that doesn't.
Well, I mean, just, okay, that's a choice that we need to learn from.
That's fine, I'm, I'm good with the first three.
Yeah, I am too.
Yeah, I think the first three should be rewarded, they did their job.
One hundred percent.
So basically, let's do a motion to clear the three properties, we're, we're not gonna clear the last one, have a motion.
I'll make that one, second.
Second, Bud, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right, next item on the agenda, consideration, discussion, and approval for selecting council officers and assigning job duties. Uh, did, I, oh, sorry, I skipped one, let's go back to D. Consideration, discussion, and approval for revoking gaming machines, ordinance number two forty-eight, can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, I could just speak briefly.
Yes.
This is for the dynamic and evolving area of law where I believe, uh, gaming console manufacturers are not adapting to recent rulings. God recommend, uh, you can.
All?
Eight letters.
All, all eight letters and gaming machines that Durst County deems that has determined violates the federal code, but to the extent, but allowing an amendment to the, uh, ordinance that permits?
Skilled games?
Games of skill to be allowed until further ruling, because it is a dynamic area of law.
And we will approve that at the next meeting?
Yeah, we'll, we'll just, we'll adapt it simply, and, so rather than fully repealing amendment, and, so basically tabling it with instructions to me to amend it to permit games of skill.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, tabled until we bring it back. All right, moving on to E, consideration, discussion, and approval of selecting council officers and signing job duties, have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Hang on, we're, I'm still.
Thirteen E.
Thirteen E.
Are there any, um, there'll be amendments to this, adjustments? Okay.
I view this more as a, a overall guide, as to how we do stuff with sort of a key responsibility, I noticed one change is that the city, city hall and civic center's been moved into grounds and buildings instead of out from community development. That, that's only changed that I see, huh?
Yeah, I mean, the reason I made some changes is because I'd like to put Jeff in lead of doing park improvements. We've talked about bathrooms for the last two years, we need to move forward on a lot of the stuff that Jeff has brought to the table.
That is no problem with it, I think it's, I think it's fine.
So, the, and the grounds and buildings, the very first thing is parks and grounds, maintenance and management?
It's just broad.
That would, okay, that would not fall under the same improvements too, okay?
Right. Any more discussion?
Uh, I'm gonna be mayor pro temp, three sixty-three.
Well, it's not in the packet, I was.
Does this still have a vote? It says, uh, council, council officers and the signing of jobs.
Well, okay, I, I vote to, we keep them all the same?
Well, you don't have a vote.
Oh, I don't, well, no, I get to a point, that's right. Jim, mayor pro temp, Jeff city secretary.
We, we actually vote, we actually nominate and vote some, and vote for someone to be, uh, mayor pro temp, and we actually nominate and vote for somebody to be secretary, that's not an appointed position.
Then we should have put paperwork into the packet?
It was a lot, it's an, actually an amendment, isn't it?
We never, yeah, we never do, it's always.
We never put paperwork, somebody just says, I wanna nominate Jim Wright to be the mayor pro temp.
Always been appointed by the mayor.
All right, did you just do that?
Yeah.
Okay, I second.
I third. All in favor?
Aye.
We're not gonna discuss it?
No, we don't have a vote.
Jim, would you have something you'd like to?
I motion that Jeff Tibido, um, secretary, uh, for this term.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I nominated Jeff for secretary.
All right. Uh, F, consideration, discussion, and approval of resolution establishing community development options through citizen-led committees that are subject to council approval.
Back up one step, do we need any more people to be available to sign checks? I know Jeff's gonna be out of town a lot.
I think everybody is now, right?
No.
Uh, no, I sign, you sign, Jim signs, and Stephanie signs.
Yeah.
That'd be good, huh?
I mean, do we have enough people to sign? We have gotten to where we didn't have the people down there to go sign checks, and we need a check sign.
Yeah, and I was, I was available one time and I couldn't sign, because I wasn't, I didn't.
So right now we have four?
We have four. And worst case scenario, I can sign, but because of our, our payment policy, it says if I approve invoices, I'm not supposed to sign, so.
That's kind of a limited scope.
So do we have enough people?
We have enough.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say, I'm done, I don't wanna say.
All right, can I have a motion on F?
Yes, I'll motion, make the.
Second?
I second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
So, you and I have had a little bit of talk about this, and I've had a chance to, to think about it, I think, I think the, uh, the idea is noble to have a citizen-led group that reports to city council, I think you're fighting an uphill battle, because for years we had, uh, you're looking specifically community development, events, and that kind of thing. For years, before I was on council, there were funds and monies available for activities, we've had people, from what I understand, volunteer to do that, and they lasted all of about one event. Then, the budget was increased to twenty grand, and, I mean, I'm paraphrasing here, but would somebody please come and help us do this? We've got twenty grand, please, somebody come help us. And, and there's just not been a consistent stream of people with, raising their hand to do this, and now, after reading through this, the first order of business is to establish a group, the second order of business is for them to go and pan for money before they come to city council and ask for anything, and I just think you're, you're raising the bar so high that you'll, you'll be right back to where we were five years ago, six years ago, with all these good intentions, and nobody doing anything about it, because they've gotta go raise the money first, and then have it approved by council. I think that's too many hurdles to go through, over the last two years, we have put together a small group, and even as positive as that group is, it's hard to get people motivated, and they're not even having to go pan for money. So, I, I just think we're gonna stifle what may have a little bit of momentum at this point.
Keep in mind, Jeff, that if we don't separate the two, it's gonna take away from the budget of building that's in the park, because you do have a set budget, and the park improvements will come out of that budget. So this is my way of separating the two, and, and I look at it this way, if, if we can't solicit the money and we can't get the donations, they can do fundraising, and if we don't get volunteers, there won't be any party, you know, that's, that's the whole thing.
You're, you're de-incentivizing what we've done over the last two years.
But I mean, even when you try to come up with some great things to do, the volunteers haven't been volunteering, it's all been on you.
Well, there, there have been those, those instances, but I'm willing to put in that work because I see the fruit of that labor.
But I'd like to put you on something else, where, you know, doing the bathrooms and the improvements in the park, I think it's gonna be long-term.
I don't mind, I don't mind doing that.
But let's, why don't we do this resolution?
If it fails, it fails, we just go back to where we were.
Right, it fails, it fails.
It's, it's too much momentum to, to lose, though.
But if it fails, it's on the volunteers, not necessarily.
You're setting it up for failure, it starts with failure.
Well, you, you know, to me, it's almost gonna get started by citizens initiative. You know, and if, if you go back, Bud probably remembers this, maybe Jeff, I can't remember, but we, we had a group out here that got together and decided they were gonna have a yard of the month. And they, and it was citizens, everyone, they've had a link to the council, and they had signs, and they would ride around, pick it out, and they'd go have a big whoop-de-doo and put a sign in their yard, and they did it. As far as I know, that was driven by the citizens.
The Halloween decorations, the Christmas decorations, all that was driven by the, by the citizens.
But, but, you know, and, and we've had somebody, the, the problem, I, I don't know what the problem is honestly, but we've had somebody come in here and say, why don't we have a craft fair, or why don't we have a, you know, cook-off, or whatever? And that's fine, but there's not enough of us five to do all that, if there's somebody out there that wants to do those things, come to the council with a plan, and we make you the head of that, and, and we'll see, if you need money, we'll give you money, if you don't need money, we'll give you money.
I think we've had that happen.
Like Jeff said before, doing a calendar, calendar of events.
We've had that happen.
But, but see, I mean, i- i- if there's, if there's, well, I remember, I remember one person here that was suggesting stuff, but she was suggesting stuff for somebody else to do. And I, I got a hundred ideas that Roger and Jeff could do, but for me, I got all the stuff.
It's the catalyst, though, we, we need a catalyst to continue to move this down the road.
Well, I don't know what that is, I, you know, I don't, I don't know if this really hurts anything, because it certainly, the, the only thing from, I would see from what you've done would, would be that leadership would be, and somebody else working with you, it'd be, it'd be like, you've been running here, but it'd be here, and they're, they're coming to you, and, you know, and you're kinda like, like me in the water plant, you know, I'm, I'm doing this, but if I've got, if, if they're wanting to do something, you know, they're coming to me, and it's a big deal, I'm coming to y'all.
But if, but if you read the, the qualifications, they've got to get donations to do any of this.
Yeah, I got a little problem with that, I mean, I, I think it's a good idea, try to do that.
That's where they'll start, and then they come to city council and say, okay, well, we got this stuff donated, and so here's what we need to make this event happen.
I, I, again.
And if they're short?
It's not a bad idea, it's not a bad idea, I'm not saying it's bad, I'm just saying it's, it's gonna be a wet blanket on what's going, I think.
But it helps transparency on what we're trying to do.
With that, with that going out and asking, you know, for, for monies from different entities, uh, that comes with a skill.
Well, industry uses to donate to the city.
And, and, I understand, that comes with a skill, um, and also, there's paperwork that comes with that as well, correct? Either we provide them with the paperwork or, or they have the paperwork on hand, in hand, so that's something else to consider, asking, you know, your everyday citizens, not saying, not saying that they're not competent, but, you know.
Well, there's not gonna be paperwork over this Christmas, this park, when I bring my bicycle up here. I mean, ain't gonna be, I don't want no paperwork.
No, that, I mean.
So the budget that we approved last year is still in effect, correct?
Correct, and that's gonna be used for park improvement, because you've been talking about doing.
But it's also gonna be used. Wait a minute now.
Talking about underwriting and donations.
Park improvement, it's just, it's gonna be used for events also.
It could be, it could be used for events.
It is, yeah, because it was.
If we don't, right, if we don't collect enough donations.
That's not part of it, though, mayor.
But if we come up with, let's say Breakfast with Santa, if I'm able to solicit a thousand dollars in donation?
Sure.
It's not gonna come out of your budget.
Understood, understood, but, but the events that are on the books, the events that were successful the last two years have been funded again for the next.
Correct, but if I can get somebody to donate fireworks for New Year's Eve, I won't have to come to the city for money. I mean, that's, that's my whole goal.
It's not a bad thing.
I mean, I would like to not spend any money from the city for community events for the next two years, if I can do it, I don't know if I can do it or not until I try.
Okay.
And if I fail, I fail.
And, and we'd lose that momentum, I think donations can be given, and that's fine.
We're not gonna lose any momentum, because we're gonna buy the fireworks.
So it's still gonna happen.
As long as that's not.
The way I read the resolution, though, it just says they shall first try to solicit, the answer could be zero, because we tried.
We tried.
It didn't work.
Then we're, then we're.
It's not, it's not a bar to it.
We're in normal operations after that, basically. Yeah.
And here's what we're gonna do, but you got, you got a couple of people that have stepped up and said that they would civically try to do something, and just tell them no, I, I think is the wrong.
Oh, we're not gonna tell them no, 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 I did, I read it a different way.
Okay.
I read it a different way, I've read that, and, and we had that conversation, that what we agreed on last year, at our budget, for these named events was, was gonna be put to the side, and that we'd have to go raise money to, to do them, and that's where I honestly think that was the conversation that we had, but to, to take, to take from what's been approved and what's been proven is a mistake. So, I'm all for getting more people involved, I'm all for getting whatever donations that can be, I think that's great, it gets people outside of the city involved, perhaps.
Judge Collins is one that made a donation?
As long as what we've got on the books is not invalidated.
No, it won't be invalidated.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Because I mean, we also cut your, we cut the budget to about thirteen-five, fifteen, twenty, and?
Which is fine, I had those other events, and I still stayed within that budget, very, very, very responsible spending, okay?
I think we squared on that.
All right, so, any more discussion? Can I have a motion to approve? Any opposed?
Well, wait a minute, you're about, calling for a vote, we've already made a motion in a second.
Yeah.
So we'll call for a vote, not a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, uh, next item on the agenda is a discussion for the revision of ordinance two forty-six, uh, being that Jeff brought it to the table, you wanna start, Jeff?
So, sure, um, I was, I sent, um, well, I sent a message, I talked with, with the mayor about establishing a way to provide our citizens with a permanent solution to what we've only identified as a temporary situation. Um, with the proliferation and popularity of the storage containers, there's entire cities, not cities, but there's entire apartment complexes, homes, businesses built out of these things. Uh, there's some pretty neat designs that people have brought in as a permanent structure, that, it's not an eyesore, it's something that, uh, they can put on their property, and so I thought, I thought about looking at, um, other cities, and I did, uh, there are small reg, small, um, small towns that have the ordinances in place that say that you've gotta have at least an acre to even put in a, for, uh, ask for a permit, uh, and that acreage, you've got to draw your, your final design and bring it into the city, and just like you get a permit for anything else. The only thing our city has done is prohibit long-term, we've provided for a temporary solution for temporary storage. I don't feel like it needs to be carte blanche, everybody can have one, or that nobody can have one, I think it needs to be on a, a case-by-case, if you've got the room and you can provide a design that the, uh, the city administrator would, would accept, bring it in just like you would a, a, um, a, a new construction project.
I think the city council should need to approve that.
You don't have to approve a house, we don't have to approve a storage building, we don't have to approve a porch, it's just we have something here in place that if you've got the land, check, if you've got a, a design where you're, that the city admin can show that you're off of the, the setbacks, you're, you're meeting our ordinance, it wouldn't have to be a city council vote, because we don't have to vote on anything else when it comes to construction projects, period, we don't. So, it's just something to consider, because it's not out of, it's not out of question that, that this would not be helpful to citizens. So, you know, we've got six of these in our, in our town already.
Permanent?
There's one in Ward three, there's two in Ward two, or maybe there's two in Ward three, and there's one right across the street from. And there's one right across the street from here, was that, has that ever been cited with a violation? You know, because it kind of fits in. It's not, it's not unsightly. Uh, there's several, there's six of them, I think is what we found, right? Six or seven? And if you don't know about it, it's because they don't stick out.
I had to drive by one three times today. The one on end.
So, yeah.
Because it's sitting way back off the driveway.
Yeah.
Now, I'm going to tell you, this is just me. If I was wanting to sell my house and my next-door neighbor had one sitting in his front yard, I would think that the people that would probably look at my house and go, man, you know, I might go look at another house. You know, I mean, if it's sitting in your front yard, if it's painted and it's, and it's placed somewhere, maybe with a fence or whatever else...
Exactly, yeah.
Then, you know...
Agreed.
That would be different. But, but just throwing one out in your front yard for storage?
Absolutely not.
I, I just think that would be, I think that would bring the property values, I don't think it's fair to the other people that live around. I, I'm speaking for the people that I represent in Ward One, okay? I don't think anybody in Ward One would, would want one of those sitting in their front yard.
Well, there's two or three over there.
In Ward One, there's, there's a fireworks stand, there's a, uh, and then, and then there's, that one's not in my ward, but as a matter of fact, the two in Ward Two aren't in my, in, in my ward. But, but as far as, you got to just, dispute, just, well, describe temporary or differentiate, differentiate temporary from permanent, okay?
Hundred percent, yep.
So, we have a permanent one up there that's a firecracker thing, okay? It's painted, it's been there forever. Uh, the guy gave them permission to put it on that property there that owns the property, okay? Uh, there was some, there was some rebuttal when that, when that thing got put in there, okay? There were some citizens' complaints about it, made, made their turn, where do you turn in at the cargo container? You know, you turn in, I mean, it was kind of a joke. And then they painted it and they put some, you know, they did a little bit to it, fixed the parking lot and, you know, it's been there. And we haven't had, as far as I know, there haven't been any other complaints about that, okay? Now, as far as other ones in my ward, you said there's three?
It, it still, it still leaves it as a safety concern. Because I, I, I can guarantee you, all the ones that you, that you pointed out that's in our community, even though I haven't seen them, they're not, they're not securely anchored. So, anytime it floods, because there are floodplains, i- if we consider doing this thing, there are floodplain issues that, that's going to come into play. So, we're going to have to, like, really fine-tune our ordinance if we're going to allow people to have permanent, um, uh, conex buildings in their yard. Um, so, that's my biggest thing, safety first, you know? And, and I wasn't back here when you had floods, so, you know, again, that's why you, I mean, if floods like that, things are going to start, you know, rising and moving all over the place. So, you know, that's, that's my concern with that, I mean, and then, of course, you know, the aesthetic issues, you know?
Which is why we have the ordinance.
Correct.
The, the ordinance we have now says no storage containers in deed restricted area, which would be from the...
From here.
Hereback. So, anything up front of Ward One or Ward Two could happen?
I'm pretty sure Becky took that out whenever, uh, any, anything that's not site-built, that wa, that was part of it down here.
What ordinance is that? I remember seeing it.
Two forty...
Two forty-six is for the conex boxes. But, I mean, there are still deed restrictions based on where your house is. It's like my house is back there, you have to have a certain amount of square footage and things like that, so we have to look at deed restrictions.
Well, the, the restriction I was speaking of is the site-built.
Right.
You know, that, that deed restriction was, was enforced in a spot that it didn't pertain to. Whenever that trailer caught on fire, the insurance company replaced that trailer in kind, but the mayor at the time said, no, you cannot replace it with a trailer, even though it was on that side of this, of this boundary here.
Even though they allowed another trailer to be replaced, two houses down from it, and then, uh, the guy asked for a modular home, and he was also turned down for a modular home, and then a modular home was built by...
Right by...
One of her constituents, another couple of houses down, they put a modular home.
That's what, we're trying to get something consistent. That's what the whole idea is.
Well, I think the inconsistency is our inability to enforce the existing ordinance we've got. If we've got six of them out here and we've got an ordinance that says you can't have them, it's kind of like the houses that, uh, have crap growing up around them. So, force it, get them out.
Enforce it or, or give, give the ones who have the land, give them a pathway to have a permanent, if they haven't caused, if, if, we haven't seen any issues with the other ones. I mean, who knew we had one right across the road and it's been there for years? But yet it's been skipped over on the other...
Probably the person that's next door to them knows it.
Maybe, but I've never heard anything like that.
I mean, you probably don't know the house across the street from me, it's been elevated and vacant for a hell of a, I do.
Long time. So, I'd like to present this, I'd like, I'd like to be able to say that we've, we've tried to, to make this more appealing for the, the other citizens, the residents out here, those that have the, the space, those that can offer a plan and a timeline to make it timely and, and, um, I think it's even up for revision. Didn't you put something on there for every two years? For reinspection?
Short-term use is a hundred and eighty days, long-term use would exceed a hundred and eighty days.
But you said that they would be reviewed every two years for, for compliance or something to that effect?
Y'all got to remember now, we went through a situation a while back where we gave some leniency to some people and then we ended up having to go through the force system.
Well, this isn't leniency, this is providing an opportunity.
Short-term permit is valid a hundred and eighty days.
What do you do when they don't comply? What do we do?
You, you do what we do, what we're doing now with the violations.
I have a question, I have a question. I, I just want to ask, um...
Two years, okay, I thought you'd put that in.
First, first question, um, what would be the benefits of, what, what would be the benefits of having conex buildings?
If you had an acre or more of land and you wanted to build a storage building, it's a very cost-effective way to provide watertight storage, road-resistant storage, and, and very, very reasonable prices. You get a lot for a little. What were you saying, Mayor?
I, I was saying, it's going to be considered personal property, so we won't, uh, get property taxes off of it. So, I think if you're stick-built, you're going to get property taxes off of it versus the conex box.
Yeah, you just get a permit fee.
Just get the permit fee, yeah.
So...
For storage, not for...
Not a dwelling.
No, not for dwelling, nope.
But I don't like it, I would not want to see one in, uh, my neighbor's front yard at all. I don't care if they had five acres of land.
So, what, uh, what kind, are there any requirements? Is, do they have to be two feet above BFE and...
Well, that's, that's another issue that was not addressed when I wrote this. Um, we do have to look at NFIP requirements too. It's AE, we have to bring it up to what payment requires, and that's something that you and I did talk about.
Well, I, I'm, I, you know, I, I have to go back, honestly, I looked at that ordinance sometime in the past and I don't remember what it said. It just sticks out in the back of my mind, there was something, they're not allowed in deed restricted areas, which to me meant they're not allowed.
Because they're not stick-built.
Put it right back. You could put them up here, same thing with, with the trailer. You could put a trailer up here.
Not anymore.
Well, you got two trailer parks or one trailer park.
Well, if something were to happen to those, you couldn't replace it with a trailer.
At the trailer park?
Where, where we at?
Yeah, if it's in a trailer park, you can replace it.
Just one up here on Sweetville?
Yeah. He's going to put another trailer.
We got two coming in tomorrow.
I was, I was under the impression that because of that issue with the, the fire and the trailer...
Not with the trailer park.
Okay, so it's got to be, it's got to be deemed a trailer park.
Those trailer parks pay a permit fee every year to the city. Well, wait a minute, they haven't done it since five or six years. They pay a fee every year.
Where, 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 where we at?
We're just discussing.
Yeah, this is the discussion part.
Yeah, we do have two trailer parks.
Okay.
That we voted to start in December to collect revenue.
He could add, he could add three more on Sweetville, he's got the room.
You know, I've, I've seen about three different people building shops out here.
Bunch more than that.
Reconsidering, they look good. So, I saw, I saw a slab riding around that day.
Slab right here on Boulevard.
Any more discussion on this? Any more discussion? We can wrap it up?
Well, what are we, what are we wrapping up?
We're just wrapping up the discussion.
So, where does this, where does this go? This is just tape, whatever, just discuss it, that's it.
That's all we're going to do.
Yeah, this is a discussion.
It was just a discussion.
And then we're going into reports, if anybody has reports.
Let me do mine first, because mine's short. You can go.
See ya.
Thank you.
All right, Bud, start your discussion.
Okay, so, uh, Sabrina just looked this up for me. Uh, we got, uh, the city council approved twenty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars is what our quote was for the road work that we had done. And the actual cost to the city was twenty-two thousand, four-hundred-and-five dollars, so we actually saved twenty-eight hundred dollars.
That's awesome.
That's for Christmas.
Also, we got it done for twenty-eight hundred dollars, that's what we said. And I'm going to probably go to the DD six meeting Tuesday and, uh, that Jim has brought up a, 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 right away, that, well, I'll get some more information on, to tell them about that. Other than that, I haven't had any complaints about ditches, we haven't had any rain, so we haven't had any, we haven't had any water backup, so, uh, DD six continues to do a good job, the county continues to do a good job, and I, I don't know, I mean, everything looks good, I'm done.
All right, Jim, you got a report?
Nah, we spent a lot of money.
Keep up the good job.
Let me just say one thing, we had a really big job over on Carol Street, not, most of us don't go over there very often, but, uh, it's a pretty nasty thing, sewer face and, uh, um, some, Charlie was involved in picking up, and we're anxious to get some rain to see if we've done any good with the infiltration and stuff that we've done. So, we've, we've done a lot of work in identifying, yeah. Yeah, I want to see if, if, if I stop the, the major part of the water going into our system. So, anyway, we're, we're following that.
Where are we at on meters? That's what I...
We are, man, we are busting our ass on meters. I think we hit, what, we say we got nine this morning? Nine, and we have nine meters and we're, we ordered another two boxes of them and getting ready to, and...
How many are in a box?
Eight.
Okay, so how many meters right now do we have that aren't registered?
Nine.
That's it? Well, that's, hey, we're winning about...
Uh, we've done thirty, how many, Sabrina? Uh, no, we're, but we had thirty-seven, so that's twenty...
Thirty-nine.
Well, that's thirty we've done.
So, we only got nine meters that aren't counting water?
Yeah.
And that's great.
That's a win. Yeah, and, um, we, 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 they did, Sabrina did a really good job on negotiating those rates and, uh, the new ones, although, you know, we're having to pay for new ones now and they do come with a ten-year warranty and, uh... Yeah, they pay for themselves about a month and a half.
That's good stuff.
That's why I was asking the accountant about our stuff.
Well, I did phone them all and they said, leave my meter on.
Yeah. I like this one.
Yeah, nobody, I've only had two people call us and say, what's wrong with my meter? I only had forty-nine dollars this month.
I know, right?
Everybody else is right, but, uh, we're, we're catching up, we've done a good job. And, uh, we're, we're chasing a few water leaks. Had one this weekend we had to fix. Anyway, just same old stuff, getting our feet dirty and, uh, Charlie and Lila have been working, working hard, doing a good job.
And I know I already gave, man, are you done?
Yeah, it's not your turn, you've got to pass.
But, look, we did have a nine-one-one, we didn't have a nine-one-one call come in, but someone called the city office and because their daughter had failed and they wanted to call Chief Gonzalez to come down there, and, man, I'm just telling y'all, call nine-one-one, start the ambulance coming, and then sure enough, we needed it. And, and, and we had a paid fireman at the fire station from Houston, okay? So, we had somebody there and a couple of minutes as opposed to, you know, somebody coming from way out. But, man, this was a great thing and, and had to call nine-one-one and got the wheels turned, you can always stop them, but you can't freeze, can't start them. Like, anyway, that's, I just wondered, I forgot that.
All right, so, mine is short and quick, um, just working on, uh, wrapping things up with my fellow, um, I think our last day with me is going to be on twenty-fifth of this month. Uh, I think I'm going to get with you and Jeff, um, is work, we're working on a grant, uh, for light in the park, and that's through the Lower Colorado River Guard, um, and it's a five-thousand-dollar grant, you know? And if it goes over, if the estimate goes over five thousand, we have to match twenty percent. Uh, so that's, that with that, um, and, and kudos, and like I spoke personally, I came and had a chance to sit down with the, the Mills on Wheels.
Oh, yeah.
And it was a good thing, so, it's a good thing going. They suggest, uh, because I asked them questions, they suggest that they have music, so just apply.
We, we've actually given the instructions more than one time. They've got, they've got a whole system here with Bluetooth, but...
Right, right.
That's...